Fire code reasons, we are actually gonna have to request this. We're gonna request that and we actually have to use it. So the overflow space is the Welcome Center. It's right in the other building, right past security. We'll have the speakers on. You can hear everything that's going on and you can have every opportunity to get over here when your time comes to testify. If you know that you signed up to testify and you know you're kind of far down on the list, we would appreciate it if you might consider going over to the Welcome Center for listening so that people who are close up on testifying can be here and ready to go. So if you have any questions about how to get to the Welcome Center, please feel free to ask our committee clerk and I hope that he'll take advantage. Please do take advantage of that fire code reasons. We can't have all the doors being locked and everything.
I think the pass gave this room three fire code purposes. The basic number seems to be number one.
Yeah.
So how far down the list, like 10, 5, 2?
Well, I'll announce some of the procedures when we're getting started. And if we do call your name and you're not here and you're like, "We missed you," we'll give you an opportunity. That's fine. We're not gonna say, "Oh, because you were in the Welcome Center and we called your name and you weren't here, you missed your chance." No, we'll just fit you in at the next available spot. So as long as you let someone know that that's what happened.
Where do we sign up to testify?
There are signup sheets out in the hall there. If you haven't signed up and you're hoping to testify, that's how we are, how we're gonna be taking testimonies in the order of people that have signed up. Detecting the presence of a forum, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to this meeting of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. We are going to begin with introductions from the committees, starting from my left, going to my right, ending with our House Chairman and myself.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Christine Burstein. I live in Lincolnville. I represent District Number 96, which is seven towns in Waldo County.
Good morning. I'm Karen Dashon and I represent House District 29, which is coastal Starbough.
I'm Richard Malby. I live in the town of Hancock. I represent communities in eastern Hancock County and the town of Stevan in western Washington County.
Good morning. I'm Scott Hamlin. I represent District 32, which is South Portland and Washington, Kansas.
Good morning. I'm Patty Hymanson. I live in York and I represent the people of parts of York, Wells, Sanford, and all of Oakland.
Good morning, everybody. I'm House Chair Drew Buteen and I represent part of the city of Westboro.
And I'm Senator Eric Braekey. I'm the Senate Chairman for the Committee. I represent the people of Auburn, New Gloucester, Bolin, Minnetonka, and Mechanic Falls. Go back for Representative Hymanson, he's getting so lonely over there right now. But as additional, as other members of the Committee get here, if I remember to give them an opportunity, they'll have an opportunity to introduce themselves as well. So I'm just gonna give the introductory spiel on how we're gonna do things today. Well, first, I'd like to introduce our staff, our committee clerk in my left corner, Annie Lori Buckman, and our legislative analyst, Michael O'Brien, in my right corner. The purpose of the hearing is to invite testimony from members of the public regarding proposed legislation that is pending before this committee. The committee will hear testimony from persons present who wish to speak for, against, or neither for nor against the bills to be heard today. With leave of the Chair, committee members may ask questions of any person testifying today. Other questions are not permitted. Whether or not you testify, you may submit written testimony to the committee. Please be mindful that testimony is public and is available to all once it is presented. Written testimony will be distributed to committee members and will also be posted on the legislature's website for viewing by interested persons. Persons testifying at the public hearing today are advised that the hearing is being broadcast on the Internet and may be heard by persons listening online. If you wish to testify, please state your name, residence, and the organization you represent, if any, and sign in at the podium. Testimony will be heard in the following order: the sponsor who will present the bill, followed by any co-sponsors, those speaking in favor of the bill, those speaking in opposition to the bill, and those speaking neither for nor against the bill. If you have any written materials to accompany your testimony, please give at least 20 copies to the committee clerk prior to testifying. And a couple of just housekeeping notes for all of us, especially those who might be there for the first time. When you testify, we do in this committee employ a time clock. You should be able to see it right here. The way we are handling the bills today, we have three bills before us today. The first two, we are going to take all testimony for these bills in one go. So that's LD 471, an Act to Improve Crowded Vaccination Rates in Maine, and LD 606, an Act to Remove a Philosophical Exemption from the Immunization Requirements for School Students and Employees of Nursery Schools and Healthcare Facilities. Following that first one, we'll do both of those bills together. We will then go on to LD 1076, an Act to Enact the Vaccinating Consumer Protection Program. So it'll be kind of two public hearings. And normally, when we do public hearings, we limit testimony to three minutes. Because we're combining the testimony on the first two bills, we're expanding that to four minutes. So you will have four minutes on the first hearing and three minutes on the second hearing if you're speaking to both. We would ask that you please be mindful of the clock. The reason we have the clock there is we want to make sure everyone who is here to present their thoughts has an opportunity to do so. So if you see that winding down and you see it coming to a close, please wrap up your thoughts. If you haven't finished by the time you get there, I'm gonna give you a gentle reminder. On days where we don't have as huge turnout as we do today, I'm often pretty gentle about it, but because we have so much, I might be a little bit more insistent that you wrap up by the time that clock is done. Of course, it's very difficult for me to be a mean person, so it's easier said than done. But please, I ask that for the consideration of all of us, that you do your best to work within those time constraints. And if you have written testimony and you can't get through all of your testimony in that time limit, that's fine. Please hand your written testimony to our committee clerk. We'll have copies of it. And as we vote on these, I know I myself personally do read the testimony given to us, and I also believe that is true with other members of this committee. Other notices. So as I mentioned off-mic, we have an overflow room today. There's a lot of interest on these bills for us. The overflow room is the Welcome Center over in the State House Building. It's right when you get past security, right out to the right. Would ask if people come in for fire code reasons. We really need to maintain the, can't go over and how many people can fit in this room. So the speakers are up in the Welcome Center. If you're over there, you'll hear everything that's going on here. In fact, they're probably listening to me now. And they have the added benefit of being able to talk over there. So if they don't like what I'm saying, they can shout at you. But in here, you can't do that. So we did Welcome Center timeline. One thing, and this is a note, especially on topics that we're, people are very passionate about, we like to be very clear that there is no, no outbursts are permitted when other people are speaking at the mic. So that means no applause, no cheering. Also means none of the opposite of that, no booing, no, you know. Everyone will have an opportunity to share their thoughts, and that's when you're at the microphone. So especially on these issues where we have people on both sides who are very passionate about what they believe, this committee space, this needs to be a place, a safe place, mutual respect, where anyone can go up and share their thoughts, and they shouldn't have to worry about individuals, you know, expressing discontent or, wondering, yeah. So I ask, please, that you do observe that, and if it doesn't happen, you'll kill your Also, the order for today, now because we have such a large turnout on both sides of this issue, we're gonna, normally, what we do is we proceed with all the testimony in support, all the testimony in opposition, and the testimony neither for nor against. Because of the uniqueness and the amount of support and opposition on both sides of these, we're gonna be doing this, instead, we're gonna be doing it a little bit differently. We're gonna be doing 10 proponents, 10 opponents, 10 neither for nor against, and back two proponents until, I'm sure we'll run out of one category before we run out of the other, probably the neither for nor against. But that's how we're gonna proceed, so that way, if you're here on one side of it, you don't necessarily have to wait, you know, five hours longer and then people from the other side of that. So we are, we're gonna be proceeding in 10 for, 10 against, and then 10 neither for nor against, and back around. I hope that, I hope that'll make sense. So looks like I've hit on everything I intend to hit on. So we will go ahead and get started. We will now begin the hearing on LD 471 and LD 606. First, we'd like to hear from the sponsors of those of these bills. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Good morning. Senator Braekey, Representative Buteen, and distinguished and overworked members of the Health and Human Services Committee. I am Representative Linda Sandborn of Forum, and I am here today to present what I consider to be crucial legislation to address the concerning issue of decreasing immunization rates in our state, putting both children and adults at risk of preventable infectious diseases that can cause significant illness, disability, and even possible death. LD 471 is an Act to Improve Childhood Vaccination Rates in Maine. This bill requires a parent or guardian who is seeking a philosophical exemption to routine childhood vaccination when enrolling a child in school or a licensed daycare facility to present written documentation signed by a healthcare practitioner that the healthcare practitioner has reviewed with apparent information about the risks and benefits of immunization. Other states have taken the similar step. Washington State reported a 25 percent decrease in immunization exemptions statewide after enacting this legislation. I have shared with members of the Committee an example of Washington State's certificate of exemption, after which Maine might model their form. This is a topic of passion and great familiarity for me personally. As a family doctor who also provided obstetrical care and had the great privilege to deliver many babies over my 25-year career, I spent many hours counseling parents about the risks and benefits of childhood vaccines. I have great respect for the patient, or in this case, the parent-doctor relationship. Trust and mutual respect is key to this relationship. I always considered my role as that of a consultant or educator, not telling a patient or parent what to do, but helping them to understand the recommendation to vaccinate, what diseases that vaccine is meant to prevent, the effectiveness of the vaccine, who should get the vaccine, the vaccine booster schedule, the risks of side effects, what to do for mild to moderate side effects, how to reach me, and what symptoms should prompt an urgent call. These discussions are time-consuming, but time well-spent. To be clear, this is an open dialogue, not the reading of a written script. I truly believe that parents only want to make the very best choice for their child. No parent wants to put their child at risk of either getting a serious preventable illness or having a serious side effect from a vaccine that is meant to prevent disease. No healthcare practitioner wants to put a child at risk of coming down with a preventable serious illness or suffer from a significant side effect of a vaccine. Almost everything we do in life has risks and benefits, whether it's crossing the street, eating a meal, with or without known toxins, riding a bike, or even sleeping in a crib. There are risks and there are benefits. So we must make the best choices we can, especially when choosing for our children, based on the best evidence, the best science, the best education we have available. We do not make the best choices when we are reacting to fear or reacting out of distrust or paranoia. Immunization rates have been falling in Maine, a trend we have seen across the country. In 2013, an estimated 68 percent of Maine children aged 19 to 35 months were up to date on the full recommended series of immunizations, the seventh lowest in the country, compared to about 73 percent in 2012. Maine's immunization exemption rates for kindergarteners have increased each of the past several years, resulting in Maine having the fifth highest rate of immunization exemptions in the U.S. We are dangerously close to, or some would say, have already crossed into rates that jeopardize our herd or community immunity levels. Lack of adequate community immunity puts those people who are unable to be immunized due to their young age or before their immune system is able to respond adequately to vaccinations, or who are immunocompromised from genetic diseases, cancer treatments, or other serious illnesses, at great risk of contracting a preventable illness with life-threatening consequences. Maine currently is one of 19 states that allow medical, religious, and philosophical exemptions to school-required immunizations. A parent wanting to opt out of any required vaccination simply signs a form or writes a letter to a school requesting an exemption for religious or philosophical reasons. A medical exemption requires a health practitioner's signature. The only change that this bill makes is that the healthcare practitioner's signature is required on the form for philosophical exemptions as well, acknowledging that she he has had a dialogue with the parent about the risks and benefits to the child and to the community regarding vaccination. It does not take away the right of the parent to opt out. It does not, as some will claim, quote, "drive a wedge," unquote, between the parent and medical provider. To the contrary, it will bring the two together for a conversation. In my experience, parents have many questions about the vaccines, especially the earliest or first-time immunizations. Parents are given information sheets called Vaccine Information Statements, or BIS, about each of the vaccines for which the child is due. The parent is required to sign that they have been given the BIS and understand the possible risks and benefits, when and where to call, and how to report an adverse reaction. It strikes me as unfair to remove the philosophical exemption from the vaccines when at the same time informing the parent that there are possible, although usually mild and temporary, and rarely serious adverse reactions to the vaccine. I believe that without a doubt, based on all of the scientific data to draw upon, that the benefits of immunizations to the individual and to the community far outweigh the risks. Healthcare providers need to listen to their parent, understand their concerns, and show compassion, patience, and trust that the parent wants to make the right choice for their child. We must build a trusting relationship and we must respect a parent's decision. I recall a family in my practice whose two children I had delivered. They opted out of all immunizations appropriate for age, other than tetanus and diphtheria. This mother was frightened of the story she had heard about pertussis or whooping cough vaccines. Unfortunately, both children developed whooping cough. The family suffered many sleepless nights, many emergency room visits, and I spent hours both in the office and on the phone with them over a number of weeks. This mother experienced so much guilt, having only wanted to protect her child or her children from the side effects of the vaccine. In this case, she needed reassurance that I knew that she was only trying to do the right thing. This experience led her to accept other vaccines. I use this anecdote only to encourage the mutual respect we all must share with each other. The parent is more likely to trust the healthcare provider, value and accept their advice when this is the case. Many parents will say that those who are refusing immunizations have done their homework and are well-informed, making more dialogue unnecessary. This is sometimes, but not always, true. We all know that people have a tendency to believe most everything they read. Sometimes, they will believe a celebrity, whether well-informed in evidence-based medicine or not. Many have never seen or known someone with measles, polio, or whooping cough, and underestimate the potential serious consequences. I have shared with you articles from The Economist and The Saddest Story World All Ever wrote about his daughter's stuff from measles from The Washington Post to make these points. It is tempting to give rebuttal to all of the arguments I know that you will hear today about the lack of safety, enough study, conspiracies, a lack of liability for pharmaceutical companies or health providers, additives and preservatives, and so on. I will not take the time to reinforce these concerns, as you are about to hear plenty of them. I encourage you to listen closely, with open hearts and minds, but also to weigh the expertise and the experience each speaker brings to the table. I know that we all want to do what is best for our sons, daughters, and communities. We can and should continue to try to improve immunizations, both their safety and effectiveness. The solution lies in continuing to be ever vigilant, collecting and examining all of the data from vaccinations with due diligence, and appropriate changes as science guides us. The solution lies in continuing research to get real answers to the causes of autism, which remain unclear, except that there is no significant link to vaccines. The solution lies in trying to search for a possible link to genetic or environmental causes that predispose those of us who have more serious adverse reactions to vaccines, so we can understand more specifically who needs to be medically exempted. And the solution lies in education, trusting, and respectful relationships that will promote high-level dialogue and best outcomes for all. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Representative Sandborn. Any questions from the Committee? Seeing no questions, thank you very much. Next, we will hear from Representative Tucker of Brunswick, who is presenting LD 606.
Good morning, Senator Braekey.
Good morning.
Representative Buteen, and members of the Committee. My name is Ralph Tucker. I'm a representative from Brunswick, House District 50. Thank you for this chance to speak in favor of my bill, LD 606, an Act to Remove a Philosophical Current law requires vaccination for our children to enroll in our daycares and schools. There are currently three statutory exemptions. First, a religious exemption, second, medical, and thirdly, philosophical. LD 606 would simply delete the philosophical exemption. This morning, I would like to make three points. First, we face the threat of disease and sickness together because we live in communities. My own family experience shows how the need for vaccination touches us all at different stages of our lives. Through broad vaccination, we protect each other as well as ourselves as a civic responsibility. Second, I think simple deletion of the philosophical exemption may be preferable to leaving such an exemption in law, but then conditioning that exception on a healthcare consultation as proposed in Representative Sandborn's bill, LD 471. Lastly, I will briefly note and then leave you in written testimony, a summary of U.S. Supreme Court cases underlining the constitutional validity of vaccination requirements for children in daycare and schools. There is no constitutional right to enroll in a daycare or school in defiance of a reasonable vaccination requirement. My personal experience, I grew up when epidemics were commonplace. My aunt suffered polio. As a grammar school child, I lined up in assembly with the entire school to drink the tay-bine vaccine from little tiny paper cups during the polio epidemic. Vaccines have now eliminated polio from the United States. Many other diseases have been controlled also, suffering for hundreds of thousands has been feared. Although not perfect, vaccines are generally safe and effective. Roger. In the early 1960s, my brother Roger came down with terrifying coughing spasms, and a young doctor refused to believe it was whooping cough. He thought whooping cough had been eradicated. My mother, a nurse since the 1940s, recognized the characteristic sound of the cough and insisted on having an older doctor step in it. Sure enough, despite having been vaccinated, Roger had whooping cough, as vaccines do not always work perfectly. Even among vaccinated children, a minority may still not take. Thus, many in our schools may have been vaccinated but are unknowingly susceptible to disease outbreaks. Ruth. At age 15, my daughter came down with cancer, a highly virulent osteosarcoma, requiring three major leg surgeries in a year of intense chemotherapy at Children's Hospital, Dana Farber Clinic, and Maine Children's Cancer. Although bald, seriously weakened, and on crutches, Ruth was able to return to Brunswick Schools between treatments. However, her immune system was damaged by chemotherapy, and she was highly vulnerable to colds and diseases. Without the security of knowing her classmates had been immunized, she would have been unable to return to school, an essential morale booster during those difficult times. Every school has students with low immunity problems. My granddaughters. As a grandfather, I often picked up my two granddaughters at daycare. Our daycare has four rooms off a large central hall. In one of the rooms are all the infants in playpens and cribs, who are too young to be vaccinated and highly vulnerable to the bugs being spread around by the older kids. If an unvaccinated older kid came down with undiagnosed measles, the main hall and infant room would be ripe location for an epidemic. We owe it to babies and children to ensure safety in our institutional settings. Nancy. Two years ago, my wife Nancy herself caught a mild dose of whooping cough, simply picking up grandchildren at the daycare, despite having all her shots. We are both in our 60s, and as we get older, our immune systems are not as robust as they used to be. Thus, my own family fits into the major groups of people seriously endangered by low vaccination rates. These include unvaccinated infants in daycare, vaccinated schoolchildren unaware that the vaccine didn't take, children who can't be vaccinated due to cancer or immunological weakness, and older people with low resistance. I'm concerned about these people. In addition, I'm concerned for healthy children who remain unvaccinated. I should also emphasize that my bill does not physically force anybody to get vaccinated. It simply requires that to enroll in a crowded community daycare or school swarming with kids, that vaccinations should be up to date to protect everyone else there from inevitable My second point has to do with the removal of the philosophical exemption as a better policy than requiring a medical consultation as proposed in LD 471. The philosophical exemption is undefined and immeasurable. Subject to personal whims, this exemption makes vaccination a completely voluntary program. There is a danger of epidemic if too great a number of unvaccinated children mix in with the general student body. With measles, for example, outbreaks can be easily contained and limited, only if more than 95 percent of the group is vaccinated. This protects the remaining 5 percent who may not be able to get the vaccine. Vaccination is a matter of civic responsibility, a social compact. When parents obtain vaccination for their kids, they're also helping protect all the other kids. It's a reciprocal deal. To enjoy the benefits of this current immunity, it is fair that we all share in the very low risks of routine vaccines. If the philosophical exemption is eliminated, parents can still avoid vaccinating their children if there is a religious or a medical reason. If parents think that the very minimal risks of vaccination are too great for them to accept, they should be able to find a healthcare provider who agrees with their request for a medical exemption. a medical exemption, or find a school where vaccination is not required. Most failures to vaccinate are probably due to lack of insurance or regular medical care, mild cessation or avoidance of passing. I believe the increase in unvaccinated schoolchildren is also due to budget cuts in our public health safety net. As our rates of vaccination go down due to neglect, it becomes necessary to enforce the vaccination rule to regain safe levels of vaccination and immunization. The general population should understand and likely will comply. Maine's policy on vaccinations should be set by elected policymakers here in the legislature, and we shouldn't use doctors to implicitly enforce such a policy through mandatory consulting. Doctors already have an ethical obligation to explain the risks and benefits of vaccination to parents. For example, when my kids were vaccinated, our pediatrician carefully went over the risks and benefits with us, and even had us sign a medical release. Having a statutory consultation requirement may be redundant and perhaps an intrusion into the privacy of the doctor-patient relationship. My third point, I'm not gonna go into detail because it's in writing. However, there is no constitutional right violated by requiring a vaccination as a mandatory condition to enrolling in a daycare or school. The U.S. Supreme Court in Jacobson versus Massachusetts, a 1905 case, decided that a mandatory law requiring smallpox vaccination was a reasonable exercise of the state's police power and did not violate the liberty rights contained in the Fourteenth Amendment. The court said, quote, "There are manifold restraints to which every person is necessarily subject for the common good. On any other basis, organized society should not exist, could not exist, with safety to its members." The Jacobson decision continues to define the constitutional vitality of mandatory vaccination laws. And the rest of the statement concerning all those cases that follow is included in my written remarks. Thank you very much for letting me go over the four minutes.
Thank you, Representative Tucker. And just for housekeeping, the only people we don't do the time limit on is the person presenting the bill, so they can pull up. In case there's any questions about that. But any questions? Representative Sandborn?
Thank you for your questions. Can you help me understand the distinction between, the legal distinction between religious exemption and philosophical exemption? In other words, if I'm a parent and I choose not to vaccinate my child for, because of religious reasons, do I then have to speak my religion?
It varies from state to state. Some states would say that in order to get a religious exemption, you have to belong to establish religion. That kind of requirement, however, has been overturned by the courts, who have a slightly broader definition of what a religious objection is. They would say it's a deeply held belief that's rooted in, oftentimes, they'll say a belief in God or a belief in the supernatural. There have been some communities, because the First Amendment guarantees freedom of religion, there's been somewhat more willingness to allow a religious exemption from vaccinations. And there have been some communities, like the Mononites and so forth, where those communities don't vaccinate. And occasionally, there will be epidemics in those religious communities. A very interesting case in Mississippi, this is unique. They had a religious exemption in Mississippi, and the Mississippi Supreme Court said that the religious exemption itself violated the equal protection clause because the general body of students who were vaccinated were threatened by unvaccinated kids coming to school. And based on the threat to the kids coming to school, the Mississippi Supreme Court struck down the religious exemption. Philosophical, of course, as I indicated, the philosophic exemption is really vague. You can't pin it down, there's no way to measure it, you can't ask for memberships. There's no belief in God required, it just means you don't feel like it.
Okay, so under law, when they're stating writing, do they have to physically write?
Yes, they have to give a written slip to the local school and say, "I object on philosophical or personal grounds." Some states don't use the word philosophical, some states simply say personal objection.
Right, in this case, they have to state right of their religious.
They had a religious objection.
Yes.
They would have to say what that belief was.
Oh, they don't have to say what that belief was.
Are there some questions? Seeing no additional questions, thank you very much, Congressman. Are there any legislative co-sponsors here to testify on either of these bills? Seeing none, we will move on to testimony. Oh?
I am, but it's against the bill, so do you want that now or when you come to the end?
What was the, hey, I'm sorry, we have to, I'm trying to look through procedures here. I know, what I've done to testify is, I say, I'm gonna rule that, sure, come on. That's a vague area in a rules law. By me, I'm gonna chip one there.
I'll read fast.
All right.
How do you test it for time limits? Thank you very much. I didn't know they were gonna be heard together. Good morning, thank you. I'm Senator Dave Nierman, representing Knox County, except for the town of Washington. Morning, Senator Brackey.